City, if you have your order, please, you second to the second. Would you please rise for the invocation of Father Martin Plas and help us cheer up, please, sir?
Father, most again, we come to say that I thank for the merit of us in the Jewish story preached upon each and every one of us. As we go through, as we normally say, human beings, bless every time that we say, and we go with each and every one of us, we should not make no mistake, for we love you and we praise you. And we just, if you will, please, all bless his name.
Amen. You believe in German pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see you. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Commissioner Aresman.
Here.
Commissioner Barsadi.
Here.
Commissioner Devine.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Hatch. City Manager Johnson.
Here.
Assistant Attorney Crawford.
And first on the agenda is the minutes of our last commission budget workshop and regular meeting on the nineteenth, which I was not here. Washington Place, Commissioner, move for a girl.
Second.
And moving second by Commissioners Devine and Aresman that they be approved as circulated. Is there any discussion? All the players say aye. And first off on the agenda is some recognition of, I'm going to get them down here. I want to get the picture. Let's start with Jerry. Jerry's already received this once, but we wanted him to get it in a commission meeting and get his picture taken. Come out here, young man. Congratulations. Let me read it. It says, small wastewater system of the year from the Florida Rural Water Association presented to the city of Mulberry. There you go. And then, our main guy, John, come on down here, John. He got two awards. Put your hell out while I dig this one out. This one says, Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association, twenty twenty-five Theodore Panian Award, John Rott in Mulberry.
And as for the back flows, if you remember sixteen years ago, or fifteen years ago when I started here, we didn't have the backflow from them.
Right. And this is a doctor saying thing, but it's a Doctor A.P. Black Award. So from here, let Catherine take a picture too. And then, I'm going to tell you, the city of Mulberry received this award, week ago, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, and it is called Best Places to Work, Career Source, Hope County. And the city of Mulberry was recognized as one of Hope County's best places to work. I was lucky enough to get to receive this for the city, and it was just, it was amazing. Now, Chelsea told us, when we went over there, that you were, everybody was supposed to wear black. And I thought she was punking me, honestly, that everybody was, but when you got here, everybody was in black. So I felt comfortable with that. I mean, I told her that at the session, so, but thank you, Chelsea, for getting us dressed correctly. And I know that you and some other people had a big hand in filling out all that paperwork that I saw that went along with this. It was quite a lengthy, uh, application, for lack of a better word, uh, and evidently it paid off. It paid off. I guess it's time to sit down and shut up, and when your voice goes, it's just, alright. So with that, I'll invite Laura down to do the library report.
Laura Holton, Library Director. And so these are two pictures from our book fair, and we had, um, two hundred and thirty-nine people come to the book fair, and the kids spent one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And so they, I did not do the math before, but that, each dollar represents thirty minutes read. So that's how much, thirty minutes times one thousand, one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, whatever that is, that's how many our kids read for the summer. And, um, thank you to Bethany for overseeing this. She handled the whole book fair and getting everything ready throughout the summer. So as part of the summer reading challenge, we have, um, the adults can participate too. So for the adults in the community returning bookmarks, um, we had a monthly gift raffle, and so they received gift certificates to the local restaurants. But our staff also participate, and, um, so here's a picture of Jamie from IT drawing, um, the winner, and congratulations to Sandra for winning our summer staff reading challenge. Some pictures in August of our adult programs. Our middle school programs, and, um, you'll see that for August, we focused on puzzles because we have the puzzle lending library. Um, so you'll see, here they are doing some puzzles. Our elementary students doing puzzle art. Our storytime, we, um, returned after a two-week break, so here's, and, um, now we're back to meeting downstairs instead of upstairs. And then Esmeralda and Sarah went to, uh, went to Versal for an outreach in August. And then September is, um, usually when there's a national celebration of signup to get a library card, and, um, there's a theme usually, and so this theme is one card with endless possibilities. And so just to remind you, with your library card, that you have access to digital resources such as ebooks, audiobooks, streaming movies, research databases. Um, you also have non-book items that you can use it, um, to check out the cultural path to the children's museum. We have, um, at our location, we have telescopes, you can check out video games, board games. And then, of course, there's what people think of in the library, um, the books and the DVDs in the library, and then the non-checkout without a library card, you can check out seeds and our puzzles. Um, so we'll be highlighting, um, signup for a library card if you don't have one. And Catherine at Studio Thirty-Seven is going to help promote, um, signing up for a library card by, um, creating, it's a craft program where you can, um, with your library card, show up, and you will, um, create a library book bag, and, um, she is covering the cost instead of people paying for this craft. If they show their library card, then they're admitted free. And if you don't have a library card, one of my staff members will be there and sign you up that day. Um, so that's going to be at Studio Thirty-Seven on Monday, September twen, September twenty-second at three-thirty. Doesn't want to advance. So you can go next. Alright, and then this is our calendar that you all received for September. These are our adult, um, book clubs, film club, and cookbook club. If you're interested in tomorrow is Friday Night Lights, if you are a football fan, uh, it's quite eye-opening if you've never read it, but if you are interested in football and student athletes, um, things have not improved, but, um, it was not a good time in Odesa, Texas. A lot of, um, so it's an interesting book about high school football. Um, here is a, uh, high school programs at a glance, and our middle school programs have Tuesdays we gear for middle school, for Wednesdays are for high school. So the first Wednesday of the month, um, for the high school students is the writing club, Creative Chaos. Then the second Wednesday of the month is high school book tasting. The fourth, uh, Wednesday of the month is novel club. For middle school, their writing club is called Storytelling Squads, they do a variety of writing activities. Then the second week is their book tasting. And then, um, the third week for both middle school and high school, um, Alicia came up to the program called Creative Trends, hashtag Creative Twins Trends, for them to do a variety of crafts that are currently popular on social media, so, such as the dazzling of book cover, um, that seems to be a trend right now. So they're going to do a variety, things that are trending, and so that's going to be the third Wednesday of the month. And then the fourth Thursday of the month for middle school is their gaming, um, Gaming Galaxy, where they will do a variety of games, prefer, possibly, focusing on board games. For elementary, they have programs on Mondays and Thursdays, and so we, Persia is back. So you just need to, this is the only one where we ask that you call the library, um, to sign up for a reading spot. The first Thursday of the month is travel club, where they, um, Kathy Ann focuses on a different state, and they learn about that state. Then the second, um, Thursday is book and a craft, where they do a craft tied to, um, a picture book. A new program that Kathy Ann is doing, um, it's also going to be on Saturdays, but it's called Explore Story, and so it's going to be activities centered around a book to encourage, um, children to take home that book to read. Um, because we found that it was difficult to do a typical book club for elementary students because of their schedules, so we're going to do games and, games and activities that get them excited about that particular book. And then the fourth Thursday is Lego Club. And then, um, on Saturdays are our bilingual programs, and we're renaming them bilingual to encourage participation. Some people were, um, hesitant about coming, thinking it was only Spanish only, but it's not. So storytime on Tuesdays, Esmeralda will read the book in English, and then the songs will be in Spanish. And we found that that encourages more participation by having it bilingual. And some books will also be in Spanish, but it's more flexible to encourage more people to come. Then on Saturdays, um, will be personalize your bookmarks. And then in September, she's focusing, um, the first day of school book and coming up with activities for that one. And then the family craft is that they are going to make a pinata. And then the last thing in September, um, our friends at the library have renamed the book sale to Book Bazaar. So that is next Friday and Saturday upstairs in the civic center. Any questions?
Good afternoon, Chelsea, I'm Director of Cultural Programming. So we, um, took our summer programming into August, so that was the beginning of the month. Fabulous turn all summer, can't believe how much work was done by the team, but we had a great time. And then, of course, our regular programming started the next week, including many Mozart's, Steam Saturday, Art History for Kids, Rock and Learn, Art Around the World, and, uh, the Saturday Can You Dig an Hour as opposed to Summer Hours. We attended for outreach, um, the Back to School Batch. Thank you, Commissioner Devine, for the recommendation, because we do face painting, so, um, we signed up for that, and Mr. Barsadi helped as well, Miss Taylor was one of our models, as you can see. Uh, we also handed out city information coloring books, including a picture of our fearless leader on there. Uh, it was a really great event, it was the first time we had been on the floor. Uh, and congratulations to the community service center for a good event. It was a lot of kids. We had a fabulous exhibit opening last Thursday, uh, completely redid the walls. It's a hundred and forty-one, uh, which is not the record for most, um, it, most pieces in an exhibit, but it's pretty close. Um, all tiny photos, so it's called Big World, Little Photos, appropriately named. And as you can tell by the picture on my left, um, on the left of the screen, we went in a very bright spray paint colored walls all over, including the doors and the floorboards and the, everywhere, there was spray paints, and we had a quick turnaround and some staff out for weddings and whatnot. So we did enlist the help of the Mulberry High School students to come and paint, and thank you to them, the Eames Women, who's the art instructor, they came in on Saturday and helped us turn that around. That's a really big pile of tape, and that's just one of them from the very, very, uh, intensive transformation. So if you haven't seen it, come by and see it, because the new exhibit is excellent. We had a team development day, August is historically our slowest month while everyone's getting back into the groove of school, so we closed for one Friday and visited, uh, the Hope County History Center, the Florida Children's Museum, the Ashley Gibson Barnett Museum, and a sneak preview of the new, um, Art Studio Collective in Lakeland, who, um, actually is being directed by our current exhibitor. So we got to get behind the scenes tour, uh, by staff and brainstorm what we like, what we don't like, what will work here, what could we do, how can we, um, collaborate or take some ideas and change them for ourselves? And it was a really great day to spend together and to learn. Uh, Steve Thomas Howell came to the gym, it was very exciting, um, star of The Outsiders and, uh, many other films, and he visited, we did a dinner and a movie with your ticket included, a meet and greet and question and answer session. He was wonderful, he was with his wife, his dog too, uh, and we had a great time at the gym. Coming up, uh, in September, Stingray Saturday will be hosted at the museum, this is by Bonnie. Uh, she came up with the idea that people know how to identify shark teeth, but we have lots of, uh, stingray fossils in the dig pile as well. So we're doing a day learning about the animal science of stingrays and how to identify those fossils easily for when you find them. We'll be showing F1 the Movie and How to Train Your Dragon at the Gym Theater, F1 on September twelfth, and September nineteenth at seven P.M., both of those are five dollars. Dinner and movie this month will be Labyrinth to get kind of kicked off into spooky season-ish. Uh, the theming is already well underway, it's going to be fun. We are inviting an artist to come and do a paint along with us, her name is Jillian. For ten dollars, you can paint this beautiful landscape at the cultural center on September twentieth at ten A.M., ten dollars is a steal. Uh, thrift store thrills, we're bringing back where we show you how to paint ghosts into your thrift shop painting finds, it's, it's a popular trend, again, only for ten dollars, and we'll have donuts and coffee, uh, probably even pumpkin spice coffee to go with our thrift store thrills on September thirteenth, ten A.M., ten dollars. We're going to be doing for free a watercolor workshop where we're working through the workbook of wilderness watercolor landscapes. Again, donuts, we feel like people like to eat while we're being creative, so we'll have donuts, and we'll work through the activities in this book for free. Uh, the first session will be September nineteenth at ten A.M., which is a Friday morning. Is that it for me? No, of course not. Coming up before I see you next will be Mulberry's Hispanic Heritage Festival, September, October, or Saturday, October fourth, from ten until one at Spence Park. Vendor spots are very quickly filling up, so if you are a vendor who wants to participate, please get those applications in as soon as you can. And that is it for me, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Julie tells the Concerned Citizens of Mulberry and surrounding areas, ain't posted spots one thirty-four Mulberry, to our mayor, to all our commissioners, city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. Hope that all have enjoyed the, and rest for, uh, Labor Day holiday. The podium looks great, everybody is present, I am so glad to see everybody. Believe it or not, yes, it is September. It still feels like summer, but summer is over and fall is approaching. Congratulations to all outstanding, uh, city wonderful utilities, uh, guys, Mr. John and Mr. Jerry. Again, a special applause, those great men. And for the city, you know, um, city of Mulberry is a great place to work, so they deserve that award for the best place of work. Let's hear it for Mulberry one more time. Yeah, this is great, y'all own car, y'all know that. Now, community report for September the second. Our city concerns, to our outstanding city manager, great, his great team of commissioners, uh, we say thank you, thank you so much for the hard work and helping to make our city bloom with pride and for the many improvements, our new growth, new businesses, and of course, you know, Mr. Johnson's pride in your three oh three, depot three oh three is still the top of the town for the downtown area. And to all our department heads, I try not to call names, but everybody from the department heads, the library, uh, Studio Thirty-Seven, uh, the Economic Development Planning Board, Public Works, Utilities, City Hall, City Hall, City Hall, City Hall staff, everybody. This is our great city. Now, our school concerns. School safety is our first priority, uh, for our schools, and we do thank God for our school safety. However, our hearts still bleed and still hurting, uh, about the tragedy, the tragedy in Minnesota. And we do, uh, send our, bring, uh, the sensitivity to those families, churches, church schools, citizens, everybody that was affected. Uh, we do send our condolences, and our heart's still bleeding. But we do appreciate our own sheriff department, let's hear it for our own sheriff department, which is, uh, we try our hardest, we do try our heart to keep our schools safe, our citizens safe, and so they're very much appreciated. Uh, more about our schools, there are some changes in our schools now for safety reasons, and I know it's not our citizens, it's not the moral of people. Some people are still passing through the school zones, the liquor is spitting, not opening the, um, school zones. And of course, now they have cameras on the buses, and now they have something new on the back of the buses, the flashing red lights, then, then the citizens and traffic to us know to please stop, you're not the passing buses, bus stop, you to, you to respect those rules and please stop. It's our children, we love them, and it's, uh, for their safety. So please, citizens, watch out for our children, please slow down, and when you're approaching the school zones and others, our places, safety. Uh, other school relation, related concerns, report cards changes, um, the elementary school, they're going back. The sixth way, uh, elementary schools will be on the sixth report card period, period. Middle school, high school, remain nine, the ninth, eighth period, report card, so, uh, that's a change by, uh, in the schools this year. The Boys and Girls Club, we're so excited about that, let's hear that for them too, that's my big song, right? Our children should be well-educated, career-minded, uh, so, so many exciting things are going, uh, for the betterment of our schools. All the schools are going that route mostly now, uh, with trade and career, um, development. Our SAW program, uh, we're just so happy again that, uh, the city has allowed us to come back. Um, Mr. Johnson and the city community commissioners, Paige and everybody has allowed us to come back to, to participate and to be a part of, uh, our SAW program. September the eighth, we'll be starting back, so we're just excited about that. And, uh, it'll be the same from four to seven, right, at Studio Thirty-Seven. Our tutors are ready to get started, and so, uh, we do thank all our donors for giving us, giving a kick up, getting our head start, a jump start, getting us ready for our SAW program, we're just so excited. So we had, uh, Pastor Brave, had two nice ladies that donated, donated us two sewing machines. Uh, also, the American Media Post seventy-two donated us, uh, twenty-five folding chairs, I don't have to keep going to the church, give them, take them back and all that, so we appreciate that. And also, they started us off with a supply of, um, snacks to get started. So let's hear it for all those donors. Uh, we work on donations, we work on, uh, tears, and so, uh, we, everything is appreciated, appreciated, whatever you did. Small, little, smart, doesn't matter, whatever you have done to help us out, the citizens, we do appreciate everything because it is for our children, and we say thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, so much. Now, I do have one request, and I'm asking the commissioners and Mr. Johnson, and you all can tell me yes or no. Now, um, the parking lot is where we usually have our little recess, and we know that economic development cars are there now, and so we don't want anything to happen to the cars, so when we have recess for about fifteen minutes, that starts from four fifteen, I mean, five, five fifteen to five thirty, just fifteen minutes. Uh, if we could, if we allowed to, to block off with the horses or the, or the cones, just for fifteen minutes, Commissioner, Mr. Johnson, on that side street, I forgot to get the name of the street, Mr. Uh, Mr. John, um, just block off where they can play for fifteen minutes, the ball, the ball, the ball is like to play ball, and sometimes the ball is going the road, and we don't want anybody chasing them. So you obviously what I'm talking about, that's that side street, what is that, um, fifth and what, you know?
First Avenue.
First Avenue, yes. Just, just for fifteen minutes, Mr. Johnson and commissioners, just, uh, they can have the little recess, uh, and the cars can still detour and go around another way on both ends, you know what I mean? Right that way, they, uh, the retention harness, we can just put the little horses right there, just to block off for fifteen minutes, that's all, for three days, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. That, that wouldn't be, and that's usually around about five, yeah, five to five fifteen, so not much traffic is coming that way to the depot. But y'all think about it, you know, we don't, you don't have to say yes, uh, think about it, okay? Alright, so we appreciate that, and, um, community safety again. Again, we do appreciate our sheriff and park department, keeping the states of citizens and everything. And we don't forget, we are still in hurricane season, be prepared, and follow safety rules, precautions, and everything that's in state evacuation, do that. Now, uh, my helpers, you can come on up there and pass out the papers, uh, farming. Community events, the happenings, Mr. Johnson's done a great job, as she always does, letting everybody know what's coming. The Concerned Citizens, we, like, for everybody, you know, uh, this is our, uh, uh, members, they had a, beginning a meeting, started out for the, for the year, it started out in, uh, August, it usually be started in September, but the game says it's not early, I said, okay, alright, y'all want to do it, we should be ready. And also, this makes you know, for our new year twenty-five, twenty-six, our plans, our goals, our projects, what we do, what the Concerned Citizens do. So you can know what we do, uh, very passionately, right? Alright, so you can look at that later. Now, for all of our events, as Mr. Johnson has said, you can go now, there's a website, you can go and do everything, the city has everything that you need to know about, uh, so just click on it and you will know. Uh, again, I need to simply go to all our families, uh, here in Mulberry and surrounding areas, even your pets, if you've also been hospitalized with a happy birthday to all of our citizens here in Mulberry. And also, we have another citizen, that's a hundred and three, uh, Ms. Annie Hall, that lives on Hill Street, down in, uh, Mulberry Middle School. Uh, she's still alive and well, and so, uh, hopefully there'll be a birthday celebration for her. This one, I make some money anyway. Now, with much regret, one of the best, best, and I know, uh, Dan knows about it, the best of the best nursing homes have been totally demolished, the old road home, that, uh, old nursing home, we have sang that many times, uh, the, um, patients, uh, citizens joined it up. But the county is now, uh, keeping it longer, and nobody wants to buy, so this is torn down. Uh, the Evergreen Culture Plus is planned, it's February the seventh, twenty twenty-five, and Mr. Johnson and the commissioners, let us know whether we can have the, uh, comments farm again. And also, Juneeenth celebration is planned for June the twentieth, twenty-five, I mean, twenty twenty-six. I mean, twenty twenty-six, yes, I would find this is still, twenty twenty-six. So, yes, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, and so, we'll let you know later with, you know, with detailed plans, but that's the plans for everything that's coming up. Are there any questions? Well, if none, this ends my report, God bless our city, our country, our citizens and our first responders, and thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, thank you.
And I guess resolution, I mean, that's going to our.
That's right, that's right, Mayor, before we begin, just wanted to update you on the purpose of this resolution, just to let you know what's going on. Uh, this is the item that you asked me to bring back to the fore, the permission, uh, dealing with the Chapter One Eighty lawsuit. Senator One Eighty lawsuit, uh, that's being put together. Uh, I wanted to make sure that you all knew, had the latest intelligence. We spoke with plaintiff's counsel today, we understand that there are ten entities that have already agreed to participate in the lawsuit, uh, two counties and eight cities. Uh, you were one of potentially five, uh, four or five commissions, uh, commissions considering entering the lawsuit tonight. We don't have a recommendation one way or the other on this, this is a matter of policy. And so, uh, I'll read the resolution, Mayor, uh, but certainly, it's really up to the commission whichever way you want to go with it. Okay, alright, thank you, this item of formal business is Resolution Number RES dash twenty twenty-five dash ten. A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Mulberry, Florida, authorizing participation in a lawsuit seeking, among other things, to declare that the blanket statewide prohibition on the exercise of home rule authority over land use and zoning regulations imposed by committed substitute for committed substitute for Senate Bill One Eighty, twenty twenty-five, is unconstitutional and should be enjoined, retaining Weiss, Serrota, helping Cole and Beerman P L to prosecute the lawsuit, providing for conflict severability, the administrative correction of scrupulous errors, and providing for an effective date.
So, that lawsuit is objected to this?
Correct, the, the, the grounds for the lawsuit are constitutional in nature. Uh, they're matters of the state constitution, and the state constitution says that all bills considered by the legislature have to embrace one subject. We call that the single subject rule. Uh, the lawyers at Weiss, Serrota have analyzed the bill, um, we have as well, and, and, and they are confident that they can maintain a single subject action. The way the single subject law works, all the provisions of the bill have to thread together. And so, the question is, how does, uh, land development, excuse me, a prohibition on land development code administrations match with, um, hurricanes? Uh, and a land development code restriction that lasts for three years match with hurricanes? And so, that's really the, the subject matter of the lawsuit. If that helps make sense.
Do we have a recommendation on the city administration? Any commissioners?
Well, my thoughts on the resolution. State drive, statewide prohibition on the exercise of home rule authority.
In your face against home rule?
Yes.
For the late cities.
And I'm totally against the state electeds annually eroding our home rule.
And how, how, how much is this gonna cost the city?
That's a good question, Mayor, so this, uh, this act, this resolution would commit the city to pay attorney's fees to Weiss, Serrota. The attorney's fees are ten thousand dollars for engaging in the litigation, and there is, there is no hourly rate or anything like that. Um, if it were to be appealed, we think that it would probably be appealed directly to the Florida Supreme Court. Uh, and so, that's probably, that would be five thousand dollars for the appeal, Lord. Yeah, there is a chance that it may get appealed to a district court of appeal, or if it does, that's also five thousand. So, it's five thousand per court level. The total maximum amount that you could see as a result of this litigation is twenty thousand dollars, attorney's fees.
So, each, each city paid?
That's correct, that's correct.
Each governmental entity paid that?
Yeah. It's a, it's a group lawsuit, so it's a little different from a class action. It's a much, much, these are the same attorneys that prosecuted the, uh, uh, the Form One litigation. And so, instead of bringing a class action, it's the members of the lawsuit that are impacted by any ruling that may come out of it.
How many cities are involved right now?
Right now, there are ten governments that are involved in it, uh, we spoke with plaintiff's counsel this afternoon, two counties, there's a large, um, a large, uh, uh, large scale, I'd say, interior county, as well as a large scale coastal county that have agreed to participate. There are eight cities, and they are everywhere, uh, there's a Panhandle City, uh, there are cities all along the Gulf Coast and cities all along the Atlantic Coast. Um, and, and there are cities that turn on the, uh, interior of the state.
And what are the advantages and disadvantages if we elect to either participate or not participate?
That's a great question, Mayor, I think, you know, if we look at the, the Senate Bill One suit, the Senate Bill One, first one, the Form One suit. The Form One suit, we unfortunately, even though we benefited in a way from Form One litigation because they didn't require Form One the next year for commissioners to file, it was back to the Form Six. The, um, the relief was injunct, the injunctive relief was granted individually for each individual commissioner, right? That participated in that lawsuit. And so, those commissioners that didn't participate in the lawsuit didn't have the same level of relief as others. We think the same thing may happen, because there, there could be causes or reasons why the individual plaintiff governments may be entitled to an injunction against enforcement of Senate Bill One Eighty. Uh, and that, while that may result in determining that the statute is unconstitutional, that's tricky. Um, you know, single subject issues can sometimes be cured if the legislature takes intervening action. We know that there is a, uh, incoming, there's a session that's coming up here really quickly in January. The, the main key, though, is that pesky language in Section Twenty-Eight of the bill, which is not codified in the Florida statutes. And, and that's really what the injunction is all about, trying to, trying to enjoin the enforcement of that provision of law. Um, I'm not confident that if the plaintiffs were to win, we would somehow also be affected.
So, going back, you were paralleling with the Form One, Form Six litigation?
Yes.
You said that, I don't know proportion you're on, just remind me of what you said.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 the, the Form One, Form Six litigation, so the individual commissioners that signed up to participate in that litigation. Yeah.
So, we as individual commissioners, did we sign up for that litigation?
No.
So, we have to fill out the Form Six?
No. No, 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 it, it dealt with that Form One for that year, so for example, there were commissioners that, that may have on ahead filed Form One.
I was a Form Sixer.
Right, but you, did you wait?
No, I didn't, I just did it to it.
Just did it to it, yeah, some folks filed Form Ones, even early before they had to, um, things like that. So, the injunction didn't affect those, the individuals that were listed, excuse me, injunction was obtained by, affected by the individual plaintiffs?
Everyone.
That's right.
Has.
Everyone else was, was a little bit different.
What did the ones that participated in the Form One lawsuit get out of it that we didn't?
Yeah, I, you know, it's a great question, yeah, I mean, it, so, it's, they got, they get the entitlement to enjoin the department from, from taking action against them. Now, ultimately, what the Ethics Commission did, they decided to just not enforce the bill and require Form Sixes. They didn't have to do that.
Oh, Lord.
Right, that's correct, because, because the relief was individual under the First Amendment. And so, each individual plaintiff in that lawsuit, they didn't have to file the Form One, the remainder of the state did, however, seeing sort of a pattern for what it may be, they decide, elected not to require Form Ones from other elected officials. The reason behind that is, you could have followed up, Mayor, you could have followed up, Commissioner, all of you could have, and, and filed a similar lawsuit and gotten the same result, you would just have to prosecute your own suit. Did that help answer your question?
Yeah, but what I'm thinking though is, then what's our, what's the benefit to us to join this lawsuit?
It's a great question, again, you know, and, and it's because I, I, I can't tell you the answer, uh, it's a policy choice. And these are all wondering, all the questions we're getting so far are, are excellent.
But I see some big cities and big counties joining that.
Correct.
Their budgets are hundreds of millions of dollars, and ours is not.
There are small cities as well, too, there's a fellow Polk County city that's joined it, one of our clients, that's very similar in size to you. Um, you know, and, and, and so, I, the benefits that you might get, again, that's up to you. I, I, there's some cities that see the policy benefit for challenging the legislature and their home rule authority, right?
That's the way I look at it.
Well, I agree with that, but.
There, there, there are some cities that see the benefit in making sure that the ordinances they've adopted between August one of tw- two fifty, excuse me, twenty twenty-four and today are still maintained. We did adopt two changes to our ULDC in that time period, neither of which I believe is more burdensome on development. One dealt with the, with foul and the keeping of burdens, if you remember the, the, the chickens, uh, ordinance, chicken, oh, yeah, chicken ordinances. The other dealt with having, uh, an alternative member of the, um, public appointed to sit on the planning and zoning commission. So, so I don't think either one of those would be overturned. So, I don't believe that you have any worry there, right? It's mainly what would happen going forward. And so, Senate Bill One Eighty's forward prohibition says that anytime that Polk County gets named as an, as, as a, a disaster area in a federal declaration, and the track of a storm is within a hundred miles, whether that's offshore or onshore, then you're prohibited from making any adjustments to your land development code in the future.
We don't really need that.
Yeah, I mean, you, you guys, you tell me what the frequency of storms has been over the last few years.
It's been more frequent over the last few years.
Sure seems like it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so, so, I, I, let me get back, the reason why I say it was a great question is because I get to point, look at you and say, what do you think the benefit is out of the lawsuit? And it's really up to you guys to decide as a matter of policy, do you think that you want to challenge this?
Here's my opinion on that. In recent times, we as Mulberry have been a leader in certain areas of state government. And I don't really want to elaborate on those specific areas. But on the flip side, I would add, it looks like it's not gonna be limited to ten grand. Cause they're gonna get up to twenty if they're gonna appeal, however comes out. So, it'll be fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. And it appears that if the group is suing, I forget what word that is, plaintiffs.
Right.
Uh, prevail, we will still reap most of the benefits of that suit.
The suit.
Yeah. I agree, potential. Though, I don't know that I see a lot of reason for us spending twenty thousand dollars. That's my point. How about you, commissioners?
Well, you just never know.
No, you don't.
You don't.
I'd rather be on the safe side. He said, we covered, and I did cover. May the Lord bless him, he's in extra money. I don't know, I'm, I'm not really trying to be facetious about this, but it's, it's just a hair situation.
But as it stands, the more, the more cities that are involved in it, the better chance it has to succeed.
Yeah, it, it.
That's on this service, so.
Look, man, I had a comment, Mayor, you know, I, I. I actually agree with you, Bishop Rastad, and I'll tell you why, some of our internal conversations, if possible, have been just that. Um, with many weeks starting in October, uh, and the session beginning in January, if there is a significant number of Florida governments that challenge the Senate Bill One Eighty, uh, process, that is, that could lead to positive change within the legislature and a mooting of the case.
I heard, yeah.
I, I, that, so, so the more, the better, if there were, you know, if there were already forty governments lined up in the lawsuit, I, I think that there would be a reason, every reason in the world for you to join. Um, but it is, you know, as it stands now, I think, I think it has to be, I think the basis for you to join is what Commissioner Devine mentioned, home rule.
And I mean, like I was just about to say, we don't need the state to come in and say, you can't. It'll be a progression, they win this one, what can they take next year? I made the parallel with unions at our last meeting, that was a fight for fifteen years, the state finally won.
That's public unions, with the exception of the police and fire department. So, if we.
So, what's your belief?
I'll make the motion to go forward.
Motion's made by Commissioner Devine, seconded by Commissioner McDonald. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this?
I got a great one.
Run to the microphone, please. Name and address, please, come.
Show Magnus, three oh nine, Ninth Street, Northeast. Question I have is, is if we don't join this, the lawsuit's still gonna go forward, correct?
It is.
And it's ultimately gonna probably wind up in the state Supreme Court, which is a constitutional question.
It could, it could, it depend, that depends on a variety of things. Um, I think there's a direct appeal that's allowed from Circuit Court to the state Supreme Court. Um, the, uh, so that would all depend on who wins, right? Uh, if there is an appeal based on an injunction, that might not go to the state Supreme Court, that might go to the district court as a, as, as first instance. That's all procedural.
And if it does all that, tiddles run, that's more money.
It is, I, I think, I think, I think twenty grand is probably gonna be. Yeah, I think twenty grand, I think you should think that the case is gonna cost twenty grand, Mayor, on that point. Um, I don't think otherwise, right? My, um. You know, again, it, it's hard to tell with the, with the situations, what's the better course of action. Uh, because you might want to be entitled to an injunction against One Eighty, because you never know what comes out of the legislature. They may try to do a glitch bill and write it wrong.
What scares me is if they go ahead with it, the legislature can step in at any time and.
Try to fix it, and, and, and that's right, they'll, they may try to moot it, they may try to double down on it, and we don't, we don't.
So, at this point, I guess, the point I'm trying to make, and I'd like to hear your opinion on it, if you got one, but, is what difference does Little Mulberry make at this point with that lawsuit? I don't, I don't.
Part of the numbers.
I, I understand, it's a group effort, but. That twenty grand ain't gonna bankrupt the city, but I just don't know if it's, if we're gonna get the bankrupt luck out of the twenty grand.
Sure, sure, I think.
And it's probably gonna be more twenty grand than it is ten, we've admitted that, right? I mean, it's gonna be something to appeal.
I would consider it twenty grand, Mayor.
That's all my own question, Mr. Manager, you don't have any feelings one way or the other, or?
No, I think this is strictly an opinion for the elected officials to make, whether or not they feel it's a, it's a thing, whether they want to join other cities, I mean, if you think the amount of municipalities in the state, percentage of them that are joining in this, whether it's a worthwhile, if it's a decision for them, I mean, in the opinion of Florida League Cities, whether, you know, they're, they're joining in as a, as a whole, you know, purity, it's a decision, I think, that's why I don't have that opinion.
Right. We felt it was our duty and obligation to at least advise the commission of the lawsuit pending, which we did over the past. Right. We thought it was our duty and obligation to at least advise the commission and the lawsuit pending, which we did over the past two meetings. Uh, and we were instructed to bring the resolution back for consideration tonight.
Is there any, is it a reason why we can't know some of the other names of the cities?
That's a great question. Uh, no, you know, I will tell you that City of Lake Oxford's participating in it. They're one of my clients, and I feel like I can say that here in Polk County, right? Anybody can go find that out, watch that on the television. Um, I've been asked by plan's council not to reveal those names publicly. I'm happy to talk to you afterwards and let you know where those books are.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
I think we need something here where we're encouraged to encourage other cities to participate.
Yes, you are. You're encouraged to encourage. At least that's what the reform resolution says, yeah.
Name and address.
Thank you. Randy Abel, sixty Williams Street. I have a question regarding what exactly we're talking about here now. Uh, the cost of this, for the municipalities to consider it as you are, some will say, we're not going to follow this path. We're gonna go down a different one and not support this. How does that impact the overall cost of this? They want us to pay ten thousand plus five thousand, we're talking about over twenty thousand. However many municipalities don't adopt this, does that change that amount for others? And are we paying the same amount that a large municipality with maybe several hundred thousand people that live there versus our small municipality, are we paying the same fee as they are? I feel that is unfair to us. That's my point.
Thank you. And I have one more question. And this is a statewide suit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there's only ten governmental agencies entered into it?
We, yeah, the, the idea was brought up to us at our Florida Municipal Attorneys Association meeting in late July. We were told that the folks behind the, the Form one lawsuit wanted to do the same thing with Senate Bill one eighty. Uh, and then, then momentum began in earnest, I think, to bring municipalities and governments on in August. And so if you think about that, that's only been two meetings, generally speaking, for most governmental agencies. Some are considering it tonight. That ten is a magic number because that means they will go forward with the lawsuit. Uh, they do anticipate on filing the lawsuit in mid-September. We should know more about whether the, that number goes up tonight, this week, next week.
Do we have to make this decision tonight?
I don't think so. I think you could, um.
Wait and see.
I think you could wait and see if that's something that the commission wants to do. The, uh, we know that the Form one litigation, there was a complaint filed and then a second round of solicitations for interest for municipalities and elected officials that wanted to join after. There is an opportunity to re-plead and to add members and add plaintiffs to the case. I would think the decision wouldn't be made here in September. So I think you probably have one more meeting. You may be able to get away with that first meeting in October.
And just for the certification, if you don't, and if it doesn't actually succeed, where do we stand then as a city?
Yeah, if it, if it doesn't succeed, so if the lawsuit doesn't succeed, then there is no effect, Senate Bill one eighty takes effect. Or excuse me, there is no, there is no effect, right, on Senate Bill one eighty. Senate Bill one eighty is already law. Um, and so we'll just have to live with the consequences of Senate Bill one eighty. I think for our existing land development code, that's not a major issue. Um, that becomes a problem if we need to amend it going forward. You know, if a storm hits us and we're in that hurricane zone, then that's, that's an issue. Senate Bill one eighty has a number of consequences like that. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any other comment? Are you ready? What? Are y'all ready to vote?
There's a motion for approval on that.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. Are y'all ready to vote on this? Commissioner Devine, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McDonald, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Barzati, how do you vote?
Wow, so tough one. Um, I, because of what's at issue, I guess, yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Ayersman, how do you vote?
I say no.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, how do you vote?
I say pro, but I say yes.
It passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll furnish that, that, um, how we get the resolution through the white robe firm and let them know what the next, we'll let you know what the next steps are.
Can I ask a question on that? Why is this, why didn't this come up at the Florida Lake Cities municipal office there?
Yeah. I don't know. Um, I couldn't tell you.
If they're pro con, anything about that?
Well, there is some pro con stuff that I've heard, nothing that really gives me pause. You know, and, and things I can't necessarily take for granted that's true, right? Uh, you know, we don't, we don't anticipate that this, so, so, for example, you know, Manatee County has been, been kind of pushed under the dog's thumb lately, you know, and they, they've had, the governor's office has asked them to furnish a lot of information. Manatee County is facing a different Senate Bill one eighty lawsuit as defended from the Builders Association. Um, you know, there's talk that, that Manatee County's position on things caused this to happen, right? We have, we brought that up at the plan's council this afternoon. Uh, and they said that they don't anticipate that participation in this lawsuit is gonna lead to the same outcomes as the Manatee issue, because that was different, that was political. This one, this lawsuit, the, the language in Senate Bill one eighty was not governor pushed language. It was rather, it was language developed in the legislature. So, you know, I don't think that the politics are such that it would have been brought up at the league. I think, as I see it, this was mainly something that the Florida Municipal Attorneys group got together, understood was an issue, and agreed we'd all take back to our votes to see what happens, right? So that, that's kind of where we are right now with it. If that helps answer your question.
All right, moving on. I want to commission conference travel budget. What's that about? Talking about that?
Probably, Jen, I mean, we can, we discussed this, the, um, we've done about a couple of things that, um, issue number in the lower budget session.
Can you leave? Help, right?
Yeah, we, um, actually kind of came up a little bit ago with Tom Levine. He expressed interest in going to the CRA conference, and we had not sent anyone there, uh, in the past. During our CRA meeting, we had suggested we had two, um, members of the CRA board that are also commissioners that did not go to the Florida Lake Cities, so we offered for them to go. So we were, um, one still is not attending, but so including Tom Levine, that'd be three people. Um, that, that's different. I think there's a separate, uh, training budget for the CRA. Uh, and then something else recently came up. Don had asked about going to EVO two, which.
Which I, I actually don't know.
Okay. Okay, so I guess you've gone to EVO one, and then we've gone to EVO two. So, um, those are some things that we hadn't really considered before when we did our budget. We just talked about the four league in all these years. So there are some other things that are coming up that are starting to drop in here. So what we talked about was perhaps, um, some of these things like CRA, maybe not necessarily limiting, because folks haven't really been to it before, but just kind of taking into consideration that we might want to start alternating years that everything goes and so on. So I think that's what Jen has put this in some sort of spreadsheet, because I would know how to do this. So if you look at this, I think you all maybe have that, maybe, do you?
Yeah, sure, the, the chart does.
Yeah, so if you can sort of figure that out, uh, it'll kind of tell you who's gone.
Thirty-seven?
Your name, my name, number, person.
I'm sorry, I tried to help.
That's my first.
That's it, that's it.
It's just written that.
It's just different. I think there's one on the screen. The agenda, the. Yeah, I mean, it's, I saw it, looking, um, finance, just to find out, so between travel and our education training, there's eighty-seven hundred dollars in the budget, um, last year and this year for conferences. We use the education training as for the registration, and then of course the travel is for all the other costs. Um, for this year, as of for twenty-four, twenty-five to date, um, we have spent ten thousand five hundred dollars, um, which means that we are one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars over. Um, and twenty-five, twenty-six, and this, not that this will happen, but all the ones listed at the top before. If everybody wants to go is based on the attendance in past conferences, uh, we would be at twenty-four thousand, basically twenty-four thousand dollars for all of those that's coming there, which would be over by almost sixteen thousand dollars. Now mind that the FLC conference, because it is in Hollywood next year, that price is higher than what it was this past year, but it only meant in Orlando. So taking those into consideration, and this does include the CRA, I mean, it's in there, but I do believe that that really would impact this budget, but I just hope that part of it, I think, you're.
Um, John, while the CRA budget have a separate travel training, does correct?
I don't believe so.
Well, how, how would we send, uh, Tom Levine to training?
We'll have to add a line. I'll have to do a budget movement.
Yeah, budget movement. CRAs can move money around easier in the cities.
Add a line.
And we do have, yeah, we'll have to just make sure, and we, yeah, that, yeah, the chapter, uh, the special district, but independent process to be done by motion.
And I have a question on the, is that set by the state how much you.
So if it is. Some of it is mileage here. Yeah, mileage, meals, yeah.
Meals are too?
Meals are vocal, they're not vocal.
With a fair Orlando hamburger fries, it's twenty-five bucks. And a coke, a zake of.
Not cheap.
Just close your way.
They're done? The state per se rule and all that.
It, it doesn't matter, I just. So what needs to happen on this, but.
Well, it's, I think it's more of an awareness thing, letting you guys know if you want to start alternating years, I guess, if you may have to go. While we were adjusting the CRA, also, so we do something different there.
Well, Jen knows that what, I went to Hollywood last year, but the time before that I didn't go. If I laid up my mind for next year, I'm not gonna go either to.
Most years, they have, everybody goes, but that's the high end. Um, whole day, on average, we've had one to two go for the legislative conference, I mean, the FLC legislative conference, on average, we've had two go. CRA, this is the first time we're having three. The EVO training, that is only if we have new commissioners. That's the only time like that we have. Which, last year and this year.
Hey. All right, now moving on. Discussion update on Polk County Transportation Plan Order, TPO. Don, you gonna talk about that?
Sure, I'll, I'm gonna give you the very short, just a couple of things, because it's a two hour meeting, and most of it is not for us.
Short version.
Okay, the short version, um, excellent. I did, um, hear that, um, Highway sixty, they're considering turning it into six lanes, and I know that's very far. I didn't have the image of exactly where it was gonna start and end. But they are considering Highway sixty into six lanes. And then there is, I can share this with you later, I can give it to Jen, I guess, and she can pass it on. If you're interested in it, there is a grant, um, from the Florida Department of Transportation to help with state roads. So then the grant comes across about that coming up, and then you can apply for that grant as well to help, help with the safety of our, so, how loads and stuff. Does that sound interesting? Um, this right here, the picture of the image that I gave you, it doesn't look so good on paper. It looks so much better up on this screen, but it's a, a, a future project that they're working on in Orlando. It's the Sunround, and it's, it's going to be a private sector that's sponsoring that. And just, just to hear some of these numbers in this, Universal Studios is gonna, um, donate thirteen acres of land for that project. Um, Universal and iDrive Partners will contribute thirteen million in annual ticket sales for the new Sunshine Transportation. Um, what else was that? Oh, sorry. So that's just a private project, because the transportation in Orlando, they have fifty-seven million annual passengers at the, um, Orlando Airport. Um, at the convention center, they have one point five million attendees, a thousand, a hundred thousand employees that go in that area. And Disney has seventy-five thousand employees, and so that, this building that they put on here is one of the hubs for the rail, for all this transportation. I thought that was, just looking at all the thought and the process and the funding that it takes to do something like that.
So this is just more Orlando than Disney?
Yeah. It's gonna be the Central Rail. There's also, um, what's that? Okay, the Bright Line, they're trying to, of course, make it go from Orlando to Tampa, so that's, that's a future plan, too. So it's Bright Line and Central, projects going on.
So you're the TPO representative. Is there anything going on that affects Polk County directly?
So.
That, and I'm just gonna say this.
Uh huh.
That we won't have to half cent Lindsay yet.
Have to do what?
Half cent Lindsay.
Um, okay, so that, those projects were provided through private funding for the Sunround.
Anything.
I don't, I don't know about, I would have to look into who's gonna fund the six lanes.
So the Citrus Connection?
For those of you that don't understand, we got a county commissioner that came in here, whose last name was Lindsay, and he asked us to support and voting for a half cent sales tax.
For the roads, county roads.
For county roads, and he gave everybody, here, I had, he, he taken something and cut a bunch of pennies in half, and I got a pair of pin snips for some. And he gave everybody here a half penny, and, uh, that's what Commissioner Devine referred to.
Is that a legal, did he face currents?
Probably.
So is the Citrus Connection part of the TPO? I don't know, I'm asking because I'm.
That's a separate meeting. I don't, I don't attend that one. I would like to, but it's not, it's not a part of this, it has its own.
I don't think it is.
Okay.
We're hoping for buses to come down further into Mulberry.
Yeah, they go all the way down to Bradley.
Yeah.
The problems that we have with them, and I met with them a few times in the past, is they can't take, um, left turn turns out into traffic, there's no lights. And, um, so we're really limited on what they can do. And if they can, um, turn, if they can turn into Bradley, and they can turn around, they can come out, take a right hand turn, come back north, but they can't turn, they can't left turn, they're going further than Bradley, because if they take a left turn, they stop. Can't turn left out of the trap. They can't left-hand turn, you're only going further than Bradley, because they can take a left-hand turn, so you stop, you can't turn left out of the trap. Not looking at us, that's all I can do.
Okay. Discussion on city manager evaluation, we'll talk about that.
Kate, please. Uh, sure, absolutely. The, what you have in front of you, Commissioner, is a membrane from the Heenan Resources Department, uh, here in the city manager office. This is a contract, contractual matter with respect to the, uh, city manager's employment agreement. The, uh, way that works is you take the average of all of the scores, you find, you turn that into a percentage, you apply that to the base salary, and that becomes the new base salary. So, um, the summary, uh, is there on the second page of this item, uh, but the, just to let everybody know, the average, uh, points available out of five were four point seven six received, so, uh, that becomes the percentage applied, and the base salary increase to twenty-three-five would be eight thousand nine sixty-four oh three. There are, um, uh, options that, uh, Manager Johnson has with respect to that, he can either take the salary increase, redirect that to something inside the budget, uh, something that's been budgeted for, help others internally, or help projects internally, or he can donate that to a chair board decision.
And as his employer, we have the option to increase the salary.
Yes, yes.
Give him a bonus, or give him some sort of enhanced employment.
Yeah, correct, correct, the, the, this contract measure permits you to take other actions. Yeah, yeah, this, that, that roughly nine thousand dollar figure from eight-nine sixty-four oh three, that, that is a, that, that's required to do that. Anything beyond that, that you should choose to do as a, as an employer, is your prerogative, and the prerogative of the commission.
Here's where we're at. Let's go down the rankings, physical management, supervision of leadership. Does John, um, does the city manager directly supervise the directors? Yes, he does. Does he entrust those directors to put out a product? Yes, he does. Community relations, communication, policy and planning. They provide the policy as professional staff, we as the elected vote on the policy. Management style, relationship with commissioners. I personally believe he's done a hell of a job in the twelve years he's been here to take the city from where it was to where it is. And with a four, a four point seven six, there's always room for improvement. I personally look at where I can improve better. But him having just average on supervisor leadership, we're talking three and a half out of five, that's like a slap in the face to the staff that he leads.
Any other comments?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm new, I mean, I'm, I'm not a budget person, I'm not, I'm not a government person. But whenever it comes to somebody's livelihood, or what can work, what shall they do, even if the person has taken it at what has happened in the city. And I'm not dating, not going to dirtheads or anything, I'm dating around there, talking about myself only. This city was in dire straits twelve years ago, mayor has told me this, a coach has told me this, I've heard it from citizens, I've heard it from city employers. We know what kind of situation it was in, and it was ready to build a belly up.
Yes, it was.
He saved that, that man there saved it. In doing so, he built a team, uh, we've got some wonderful employees here, and we've got that plaque on the desk where we, you know, that's workplace.
Yeah, yeah.
Gentlemen out here have one of ours, the city has one of ours, and it all goes back to the top, somebody must have told me this, everything filters down from the top. It could be bad, it could be good, and I've been to some cities where it's been bad. Luckily, we're not one of them, um, I can't think of him enough, I can't think of his staff enough. And I really like being able to have everything in front of me to see where things stand. But my job was to discover this. Like I said, I'm, I'm not a numbers person, I've never been a numbers person, but I can look at what has happened and know straight off, this was a great job. He did all the fun, it's for me, and I just wanted to put that out there.
So, yeah, uh, my name's.
You made me.
I think I might have been the only one here when he came.
I was here.
You was here?
I saw pictures.
Learn from you. Well, I know what we had when, when he came, and.
The new city manager, right?
Yes. Uh, and, uh.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
He took this job for sixty thousand dollars a year, and that was just about the lowest paid city manager in the county. And he's, he wanted it so bad, I guess, he, he agreed to that.
Out of the mistake.
And also, one of the stipulations in the Mulberry Charter is that within X number of days, you have to be a resident and, and live in the city of Mulberry. That's in the charter, and he agreed to that, so he did end up buying my house here, out two doors down from my daughter, but, uh, and he took that job at sixty grand a year, which was less than I made at that time as the principal at the high school. But, uh.
How many hours did he put in?
About as much as he puts in now, I think. Because he does put in a lot of hours, and he's on.
About four, seven.
And you gotta think, he, you gotta, he's on call twenty-four seven.
Well, I just know this, when I have a question and I shoot a message over, he answers, Jen answers, I don't care what time of day it is, or night.
Well, I'm gonna continue where I.
Go ahead.
Got to stop.
I'm sorry.
But, no, but that's good, that's good. And we had a little, had a, we had a little joke about it. There was a guy that was applying for the job at the same time, um, which was applying for it, and, uh, I think I listened a lot more to that guy than what I was listening to him that particular night. I'd be the first to tell you, I did not vote for him, we made that like a charity joke, but he has proven from day one that he was the right one for this job, so I don't know where all these four point this and four point that came from.
Some reason there too, Coach.
Uh, so, uh, all of my, what, kiss you, you're fine with that. And, uh, he, he has carried this city since he did it. Thank you, and I would, uh, agree to whatever, and you know, and, and, I think a couple of years ago, when we put this amount of, I don't, it wasn't the same amount of money, but he turned the money down, and, uh, said, give it to some, he didn't say give it to somebody, but we were able to give some of the other departments of which is more urgent than, than he got. But that's the type of guy he is.
And every year he gives his Christmas bonus to SBCI.
Oh, yeah, he always gave you Christmas.
I would like to entertain a motion if you would, because I can, uh, you know, I told you that, to award him a bonus this year.
I'll sit there.
Of, of five thousand dollars.
I'll sit there.
You make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
And he seconds it. Is there any further discussion?
Want to do more than five thousand dollars, considering that with his four point seven six rating, that was eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and three cents.
That's just a number that I was given. That's why I would pay that.
And he can do what he wants with the money according to.
He can even dominate it if he wants.
His whole discretion is what compensation speaks. I mean, anyone know Rick, he's a generous person, I mean, like you've stated, he's, gives his bonus, his bonus annually to SBCI.
Christmas.
Rick, are you thoroughly embarrassed now, I'll be able to walk through your door?
Uh, yeah, uh, usually, I'll sit here.
You usually wait.
I'll be honest with you. And I'll sit, I'll, I'll sit here for this one, though.
Okay.
So.
Are you crying?
Not yet.
Let's, just, let's take a time. Okay, would you roll call?
I'm gonna say, I would play. I want to play, we'll say I.
Aye.
I lose.
It passes. He does the best he can, and he does a hell of a job, yes, he did.
I was gonna say that, um, I was a part-time employee here for three and a half years. Doing, uh, extended work, and, um, I love working here. They needed full time, and so I didn't really go full time, but I enjoy working here, um. I'd say, thanks out about it, the employees are great, and Rick was always very helpful anytime that I had a question or whatever, so. It made it easy for me to make a decision to, uh, run as commissioner also.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I just wanna say, I had those kind of words, words there, uh, maybe more to be, than the bonus and the evaluations, and, um, I appreciate, um, the diversity of the scores. And, uh, I will tell you that I, I am gonna donate the bonus for, um, it's unexpected, and it is, um, I appreciate it because it comes from your heart. It will go out from my heart in the name of you guys, and I will let you know at the next meeting where that's going. So, we'll go with some local ones around here, and that was, I had, when Drew drew up my, my last contract, it was that I could, um, give that money away, and so I will let you know.
I do, so.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll, I wanna explain one more positive attribute that he has that I admire, that I cannot do. He, he can look at the city budget and see pots of money, and I know John Wasman, he probably hates that. He gets, Rick can see pots of money, and he knows where it's going and how it can flow from here to there, and it's, when, as big a budget as, you know, our shit little city doesn't have a huge budget, but it's still a lot of money. And, uh, he can sort of see where all that money is going, and, and, you know, some people, organizations use, uh, as their write checks to pay bills, they use those machines that sign, he doesn't do that. He signs every check that goes out of this place, so that he knows where our money is going. So, uh, applaud him for that. All right, moving on.
The deposit statement?
Yes, ma'am, come on. I will allow.
First thing she says, let's give her a round of applause.
Yeah, that's right, applause. Uh, June tenth, concerning citizens, I'm coming in the name of the citizens, Mulberry, we are so excited that Mr. Johnson is, is our manager, and, and I can speak to, um, like Court said, Mulberry was a bad ass year, I mean, terrible, and Mr. Johnson saved the day. Saved Mulberry, so let's hear it, Mr. Johnson. I'm a little disappointed, this score, I've been having a hard feeling, it's been a long time, but, um, thanks again, Mr. Johnson, thank you. For your ship and for Mulberry, thank you.
All right, we're going on to, uh, city commission, oh, I've got one more, come on down, sweetheart.
At that DMC three nine eight, on West Ninth Avenue, Mr. Johnson, you deserve every day. We've worked together, we got the, uh, Eddie Wood of Pavilion done, we got the, uh, the park for my father done with the pavilion on it, so I'm here tonight, I couldn't sign because I don't run anything, coming from work. We have a project that we need to help, Mulberry, behind me, that lot behind me, is coming up for sale, and someone related to me would like for it to be changed from its, its, uh, changed to residential, so he can help me extend my house. So the city need to change, do some changes there from business to residential.
The whole process you gotta go through, you can see our development directly with.
Okay. I want everybody to know that he would like to buy it, he's my grandson, and he loves Mulberry. So you work with us, and I'm hoping that you all will work with us again, and try to get this land where, somebody from Mulberry is concerned about how it looks down there on Northwest Ninth Avenue, because we have some issues, and we're trying to fill it up. You can ride through there and see what we are doing, and look at the park, it's seven to none. And thank you all again so much for what.
Thank you. All right, time for commission comment, because there was nobody on the sign that seat, and. Coach, you want to go first tonight?
I really don't have any, and I'm gonna apologize to Neil. Uh, I promised him, uh, I was gonna meet him after the smoke, but I'll have smoke. Take our smoke.
We were wondering.
And, uh, I, I call myself on my yard, but I got a really stick out there. And come down with coal, and you're gonna read it, so I'm still probably just cold. Second, and I want, I hope people forgive me, but my second thing, I just wanna, I, I, I just appreciate all the commissioners standing with the ones that know Mr. Johnson, I knew Mr. Johnson, uh, and the things that he's done in the past, and they would devote along with us to give him what he's doing. He's been more retired for two years, but these situations keep coming up, and he keeps staying, so if we get this, uh, city, it's gonna be a baby, you know, down in the past of.
So, like, if this citizen, this citizen, this guy, you die?
I'm not hoping, I'm just saying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a decision also, what I, I try to run next year or not. If he stays here, but, uh, that's all I have, so I'd like to go.
Ms. Ersham?
Um, after the last chamber breakfast, I got to go with our American Legion Commander, and, um, we went to the, um, Girls and Boys Club, and through Home Depot, they, um, donated a grill that was a big grill, you could smoke around a grill and all that. And then one of the veterans lived with us, that was there at breakfast too. His group donated a, um, monster grill, and then the Legion donated, I believe it was a thousand dollar check to the Boys and Girls Club. So, we went and presented them, there were several of us, it wasn't just the two recruiters, five, I think, six. But, and they let us take a preview of the building, and I was impressed, it's gonna be nice, and the things that we can do for the children especially, and keeping kids busy, you know, and not running the streets or whatever, I, I think it's so good, work with kids, um, in the city. So, I enjoyed that, and I want to say congrats to John and Jerry for your awards, and I totally agree that Mulberry is a great place to work, and it's good that they got that award. And I even gave you a five plus. One of my plus. Anyway, that's all I have.
Hi, you, Ms. Harson?
She had one of them. Well, first, congratulations to the City of Mulberry, for being granted this best place to work. John, Jerry, great job, that's a very important department that you're in, and it's based on what our community stands on. I'm freezing here, so I'm shivering, um. Keeping with that, don't forget that there is a couple of, um, things coming up, talks coming up with Jose about the water wells, the, um, utility wells. That is September the ninth and the tenth, uh, the ninth is going to be about the well here in Malt, in Barto, on the tenth is going to be about the one here in Mulberry, and that's going to be out at the John Wright, uh, Yawasara. At the W H Stewart Center, one seven zero two Highway seventeen South in Barto, four seven. One of, I won't be able to make, but one of I will, so hopefully I get the information that I'm looking for. There was something that had crossed my mind when Rosa was talking about kids. Went to the first Mulberry High School advisor, named Chelsea, was there about Sam, right? She was there?
No, I, I wasn't.
Yeah.
Jane.
I'm in writing. What's great is listening to the kids and listening to their eagerness and what could happen in the city, and finding out that they're making a point in the city law. That's kind of cool. I did see them setting up their round table here, so we see our future meters, and up, um. Just talking to them and giving their point of view has been great, um. And I'm hoping that we can just keep going forward on that. One thing that I've heard from the audience, a couple of audience members, and one thing I did put right now was, can we hear collar microphones? So that everybody out there can actually hear.
I'm hopeful that when we get to the new facility, that will not be a problem.
It helped me too, because like I said, I hear the word, and I've been hearing some strange things tonight, so. Other than that, that's, that's all I really have to say, I hope everybody has had a great Labor Day, and see what we can do going forward.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harson, we are looking into, um, our recording software, does have an ability for, uh, hearing assisted, um, devices and things like that. So, we're probably looking into some of that, um, to be able to assist anyone that may have, you know, hearing, um, problems or anything, so, um, we are looking into that.
Well, mine doesn't happen all the time, it's just whenever the nearest decides to kick in, but I have heard from a couple of people in the audience that they have a hard time.
Well, I also know that people on Facebook, they can't hear, they can't hear squat. If you're watching on Facebook, it's very difficult, most of them can hear Neil and I.
Yeah, well, y'all's voice residents.
But after that, it, it doesn't go weird for them.
Has nothing to do with it.
That it?
Yep.
That's it.
Ms. McDonald?
So, I appreciated the residents here tonight, um, I enjoyed having them come up and speak, and I love having to see the community engaged like that. Also, um, one of our little business owners in the community, Courtney, she's doing a wonderful job at the fruit stand, and she's, uh, she's out there on the weekends, and the prices and the, and the quality of the fruits are really good, so I'm glad she gets to provide that for our citizens. And other than that, congratulations to everybody who won the award, and I hope everybody had a great Labor Day.
Ms. Glenn?
I've got a list today. Okay, good.
Let's go ahead and talk about it.
Uh, I, I don't talk about it, maybe you will, and maybe I can speak about it if you don't. Looks, I'm just random. I'd like to thank the Commission today for voting on this lawsuit as opposed to doing it next meeting, as I won't be here, I'll be at the Ritz League of Cities, um, meeting as the treasurer, um, so thanks for voting when everyone was present today. Badcock Park, looks great, went out there, nicely manicured, no more tall lemongrass, we purchased that. With that being said...
Still under contract.
Okay, under contract.
We did clean it up, though, we have a code enforcement, um, situation, we cleaned it up. So, hopefully by the time the thing comes around again, because we've got to wait for the thing to get tall again, and then go through the whole process.
We'll have it in our possession.
Hopefully. Sure, we'll probably update it sometime.
In case you all don't know as electeds, the Florida League of Cities has several different committees we can choose to be on if we want to get, active and advocate for our cities, so I encourage you all to look at the Florida League of Cities website to see what that is, um, where you might be interested. City Government Week, you all asked to provide four of the nine, well, I'm an overachiever, I think I did like six of the nine. Um, I copied, I just typed it all out, so when they are ready to build that, they can just copy it and paste it, boom, done, instead of having to spend the hours typing it, because it's a lot. I spent a couple hours going over that, so looking forward to see what's going to come of that. I can't even read what I'm writing there, um, something about a list, um, oh, light! I'm about a month behind. The light at M L K and sixty is fully functioning again because school has started. And I say this every year about this time.
Don't drink three.
The state of Florida, in their great knowledge, thinks that that light should be only fully functioning during school hours. Yeah, during school, on school days as well. You try to go east or west on Highway sixty from M L K without a light, you know, you're gonna be driving the city bus, you ain't making a left, you're going to make a right U-turn, because it's sometimes it's not safe. But they'll do something about that light once someone tragically passes away. Shouldn't have to be, but that's the way the state works. Okay. I go through the Nextdoor app, and I have the Facebook, and I look at some things occasionally. So, someone posted this five days ago, and there's no filter in my mouth, here, there, or anywhere. City of Mulberry got plenty of money to buy all these empty bank and badcock buildings, just wondering if they're going to open them with businesses that will offer jobs to the residents or public. Like, are you for real? The city doesn't provide jobs for residents in the public just through the staff the city employs, the awesome staff the city employs. And she just said, we spent sixty thousand dollars on a park. Come on, really? Are you just that crazy? So, I'm educating this person in a diplomatic way as the best I can. I'm scrolling down.
I would encourage you to not.
Okay.
Because then she's gonna want to respond to you, and then you're gonna want to respond to that. And then she's gonna respond, it, it never ends, if you ignore it, it dies.
Well, I educated her, the city bought the old SunTrust Bank, which is now Studio Thirty-Seven, the studio offers many, the city offers many, many free programs. The city bought the Badcock property, which is now Depot Three O Three, there are seven restaurants there, this employs about fifty people. Additionally, the city did buy Badcock Park, which provides parking for the Depot Three O Three, the gym theater, and other downtown businesses. I mean, I wasn't going to engage in a negative sense, but I just kind of wanted to clean up those mixed vibes that someone may have. So...
And I don't want to know who that is, but I'll also say you can't argue with idiots.
I read that.
This is true. So, with that, that concludes my reports, my comments.
Right. And I mean that. I want to thank, I, I wasn't here at last meeting, I want to thank the city for allowing me to go to the Florida League of Cities Conference in Orlando, it was a great conference, and learned some things, and brought back some ideas, and, uh, and, and sorry that Neil was not able to go.
We missed him.
I'll be there next year. We missed you. So, I don't think I'm going to go, but I'll. You were talking a little bit about the Florida, the city speaking events coming up, or, you know, like, talking to the civics classes and stuff like that. And every year, and I can't remember what it's called, in November, the schools invite speakers to come in and talk to their kids.
I forgot what it was called, I'll tell you.
Uh, but...
The Great American Teacher. Yes, yes.
Say again?
The Great American Teacher.
Yeah, the Great, Great American Teacher, and they invite, I'm sure every one of you will be invited, but, uh, including myself, and maybe, uh, Rick also, but, uh, I've been to the middle school, I've been to the high school, and I would encourage you to partake in that, because they will be out recruiting speakers. And, uh, you can speak to one class, or you can speak to six or seven classes. If you want to stay all day, they'll allow you to stay all day, you can talk to many classes, or you can talk to one class, so, I would say about that. Uh, and I have a list, but I have no, there's no one to do it. I wanted to congratulate all of our Florida college football teams this week, all of them. I mean, from F S U one, being a ranked team, the Yetters one, didn't beat anybody, but they won, uh, South Florida won, Miami won, not real sure about U C F yet, but anyway. But all the Florida teams won, congratulations. Ms. Julie, I really enjoyed your recognition party that I wasn't here last meeting to tell you about, that was just really, really, really nice, and you deserve all the accolades that you received.
Thank you.
You did a lot of work. I also got to tour the Boys and Girls Club building on the, I was late getting there, Rick almost reminded me, I was out doing something else, and showed up late, but I did get to go in, it's a beautiful facility, that's one that Mulberry, the City of Mulberry will be proud of for many years, I would tell them. It's got bright colors inside, and it's just, it's just a nice facility. If you have interest, the school board is redistricting school lines, and I know that the Mulberry High School district is being changed a little, not a lot, I don't know why. I haven't seen the redistricting lines, uh, but if I was still there, I would be there to find out what their proposal is. And then, last but not least, on a sad note, uh, a man that grew up in his town, Tommy Farmer, he's about your age, I think, Coach.
Or older.
Tommy Farmer, he went to my church many months ago, he became a Methodist minister, he passed away this week. So, uh, he pastored churches in talent, all over Florida, so, in his ministry. And with that, thank you, and I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the kind words earlier, and the evaluations, and the kind comments on your evaluations as well. I like it, it was well on my score, this gives me something to aspire to on my future evaluations. Hoping that, uh, maybe some of the scores don't quite like a partition, participation trophy, should hear it. I want to congratulate, uh, John on his two awards that you received, and Jerry on the, uh, that's a, that's a high, uh, award, the best wastewater, small wastewater plant in the state of Florida, that's a big deal, I know that guy, I like everybody. That's a lot of, you know what you're washing down there? And also, that great place to work award that the city got, you know, that's, uh, the folks that put that together, we had a couple people working hard on putting that together, and that came back through the staff who voted on that, so that's, you know, nominated by the staff and voted on by the staff, so that's a high honor to be achieving by everybody, so that's a big deal, so. Uh, so anyway, um, got a few things to go through kind of quickly here. Met with, um, talked about Bronx Barbershop, Christie Salon, about the CRA, they're in the queue, they've been in the queue now for a couple of months, but did meet with them about some of their plans that they're working on for the, uh, CRA to be going forward in the next fiscal year, it's coming up. Just to help guide them through their presentation, what's expected, their PowerPoint, prices, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, met with Drew and Ron regarding utility service agreements that are coming up for some of the upcoming, uh, folks that are, were trying to develop those coming forward. Also met with Eric, with our I T dynamics people regarding upgrading our cameras in our system, uh, some of our buildings, the system we have is a little bit, uh, was never really a great system, beginning with some of our cameras, the, uh, like, expectancy is long overdue, it should be about five years old, or about eight or nine years old, and they're just getting tired, and they're not able to pick up the clarity of some of the stuff that they should be, for instance, way that truck stalled a couple of months ago, we could, not only could we not zoom in, but it sort of jumped over when the guy got in the truck, so even if we could zoom in, it was sort of like, there's the truck, and then there's the truck driving. So even if we could zoom in, it was sort of like, there's the truck and then there's the truck driving away. So I missed the whole part of the guy getting in the truck, walking over to the truck and getting in the truck. So that wasn't good. Met with the government affairs or public affairs temporary director of Mosaic regarding that. Deep well thing that FDPC is doing the presentations for, the one for the New Wales plant, the other one they're doing. And that New Wales plant, you know, has Mulberry Echoes, is actually, I looked at it today, is eight point eight miles away from here. Which is, you know, close to Fishhawk. It's really not that close to Mulberry. It just has Mulberry Echoes, but it's not in the city limits of Mulberry. We're the ones that are still working. We get, we get, we get all the heat for that when they're already going wrong out there, but it's, it's really not very close to Mulberry proper. She just talked about what they're going to do out there. The North Force Main Sewer Bypass Project should be going out to bid very shortly. I think we're about to advertise that thing. That's the sewer line that are coming south. How do the population grow and the businesses that are hopefully mostly paid for, not going to be mostly paid for, but. That will cover the vast majority of the payments. Within about two weeks, municipal complex, we should have a newly developed budget for that for the commission to review. It'll be coming to you guys to review that budget update so we can, you guys can approve that and so we can probably go out to bid on that budget. Depot Three O Three, haven't received too much of an update on that seven thing. You know, we're keep negotiating with people. Space there. Comes and goes. People agree to come in and they bail out, but we're trying to be very picky because that's like the first place a lot of people see when they come in. So we've been pretty fortunate with everything that's gone in there and kind of choosy. New lift truck that you guys approved, probably six or seven months ago, is out there. You've seen it out there. That should be in service now. It was ready to serve this morning and I think Thursday or Friday last week. Had a successful run of cat and kitten trapping. We, we had that one cat that was out here all the time. The mother cat, they kept having more and more kittens. So they do have a cat shit neuter release program at the SPCA. And we have, we have really good relations with the SPCA directors, you know. So we borrowed some kitten traps and we have a cat trap here. And so she had a litter of kittens underneath the train car over at the museum. And so our public works department was able to capture kittens and mother and I think the son of the mother. And we transported everything up to the SPCA. The kittens are going to be adopted out. The mother and the son came back, but they're now mixed together. They're surrounded shots and they're living, I guess, somewhere over there at the museum. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Jen took a kitten home, so. Apparently fitting it well, right?
As long as my, the other cat accepts not the baby.
Her husband and the other cat do not accept the little kitten. And so, yeah, so hopefully we'll have more lives around here. Did take a tour of the Boys and Girls Club. They're not going to have the hospitality slash hair cutting thing over there that they're going to have, I guess, because there's another. Harbor school or something very close by. They didn't feel that would work. So they're now looking for suggestions, et cetera. They did have a long discussion with some folks over there. We're sort of hoping that there'll be a sort of a link, you know, obviously we have this school link, you know, between. Elementary school, middle school, high school, but also between sort of the SOE program and the Boys and Girls Club and the elementary school and the middle school and the high school. Sort of link this whole sort of tutoring, life prep, skills sort of thing, maybe marry everything sort of together. Drop that Boys and Girls Club with those classrooms that they have over there. And find out whatever school skills are needed over there and possibly, you know, academies and so on. So I didn't mention them. So they may reach out to you somewhere along the line and see if there's some needed skills somewhere. So you may hear from them if you're too long. I don't think I have anything specific of that. So Drew has a bunch of stuff. A lot of questions, I think. There's some stuff, but not the most important.
You have nothing?
Definitely.
City Attorney.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I brought another presentation document that I'm finding that they are very good for keeping everybody and myself on task, so. So just to give you guys an update on where we stand for legislative session, we've taken a look at the Senate Bill Seventy Four ordinance changes that need to be made. Also the Senate Bill Ten Eighty changes that need to be made. Thankfully your local or your, excuse me, your U five ten development code does not contain any, any. Dates or times that are adverse to Senate Bill Ten Eighty. That's the five day component where you have to let everybody know what's required. So in any, in any event, we think we can just copy the language out of Senate Bill One Eighty and get that ready to go. We're anticipating it's going to be review and action done at the planning and zoning commissions next meeting in October. So you're probably looking at late October, early November for formal ordinance changes. But the, the, the Department brought it out work together to make sure that those policies are adopted. So next slide please. Just update for you on the Badcock Park. It's a great update. We were able to negotiate the purchase price down to sixty thousand from sixty two thousand. Four twenty, four seventy, give or take, something like that. And so that was done immediately after we met with you all on the nineteenth. Last week, we forwarded over a purchase and sale agreement to the Sibley Austin firm that's handling the bankruptcy or the. Sales of property and those kinds of things. So right now Catherine May, I think it's me, like with, with Sibley Austin is looking at the contract. We don't have any comments back from them yet. That's pretty normal. We, we suggest that the contract be executed by all parties on or before September eleventh, if we can make that happen. You do have a budget meeting on September ten that we could tack this onto if we need to. But in reality, that date also shifts around a bit when, when parties are negotiating contracts. So my, my thought is that we hope to have this done by the end of the month. The suggested closing date, we picked Friday, November seventh, mainly because that's around a forty five day window to get everything finished. So the, just to kind of let you know what's going on with the full county utilities issue. We spoke today with the W County Manager John Bodie. And the engineer for the villages, townhomes and the apartments behind the gates has been in contact with PCU staff. The main question is hydrology and whether we can release those two individual or those two companies for build out, horizontal build out. And so we're waiting, of course, on giving the hydrology reports back before we can do that. We've also reached out to County Attorney's Office today to start work on the interlocal pool water purchase agreements. So we, we think those trucks, we think everything is on track for those developments. The water concerns and the developer attorney contacts, just to kind of update you, the Sterns Weaver Miller contact. Turns out that that gentleman started his own law firm in the interim period. So I sent an email to him and he managed to get, he managed to get back in touch with me today after I already created this document. And, and so he started a small law firm with his wife. So we're, we're hopeful we can work that out. I'm trying to set up a meeting to talk with him on Thursday or Friday about the potential USA that we're doing for, for Victoria Bank of Banks. The Hill Ward Henderson contact, the Lennar, representing Lennar Developments. We set a draft utility service agreement to them last week. And so we're hopeful that we'll get comments back in the draft here shortly. Also, as you all are aware, we've, we've received a letter from Peterson and Meyer, PA, representing Bridgeport Lakes. Received that roughly two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, and we're requiring now as to the response. We'll keep you updated on what we do there. Other items for board, the Depot Three O Three loan location is on target. We anticipate that that should happen at your next commission meeting on nine sixteen, next business commission meeting. The millage and budget, we've been working with your staff to create the millage resolutions. We think that those are ready to go at time for your nine ten and nine six budget hearings. The coast concrete matter, this is a priority from management. We are working right now on the utility service agreement for the new concrete plant. We've been exchanging emails back and forth with the owner of that plant and we received some significantly helpful data from that owner on what their utility usage may look like. So we're going to put together that agreement. We're hopeful we'll get that to you soon. The other items, just listing what I've been up to in the interim. We've looked at variance application for two twenty five East and Road. That's a fence issue. Everything seems to be okay and on target for that. Your ZVA folks meet on nine nine. There's also an alley abandonment application. This follows up on our public meeting we had last. The Knolls Division, folks who own property in the Knolls Division Block Three, just lying north of the, and the applicant's name is the church.
Greater Hope.
Greater Hope. I was going to say Goodwill Open. It's Greater, but that's a movie. No, but the, the alley abandonment application's been filed. I'm going to work with Ron's office to make sure that those folks have everything they need in line for you all to consider that at a proper meeting. Last, just want to make sure you all are aware, the, we're, we're, as we transition over to a new fiscal year, Mr. Murphy and I. Are getting copies of the government sunshine manual for twenty twenty five as well as a copy of the open government pocket guide. These are published by the Florida General's Office and the First Amendment Foundation jointly. So we'll hope to have those for you come October one, so that way you all have a copy of that. That's it for my report, Mayor, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions?
I was going to ask you, Rick. Oh, is there a? I guess you said my name. Are we going to change the name of that Badcock Park? Or let's say the same.
Yeah, if you guys want to change it, sure. We just come up with a name, a little official name, just by way to lose it.
I kind of do too. You can say left the fine ride. Rick Johnson Park. City Attorney, what you got?
Just a reminder that next Wednesday is the usual date for meeting. So it will be next Wednesday and that is just for our tentative budget hearing.
Is that, is that the tenth?
Yes.
And the time?
It is five thirty one.
Yeah.
Five oh one.
There we go.
Four to four required, it's gonna be after five.
That's, we'll send you guys a reminder, but I was.
Thank you. Dismissed, retained, forward, go. Thank you for coming, everybody. Hard luck, Salome. Stand your guard.